I'm going to call this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education to order at seven o'clock P M. Uh, and we'll start with uh our secretary calling the role to make sure we have a board.
Uh, Joe Abdella. He was here.
Joe was here.
He is here. All right, John Boniudo. Is John not coming tonight? I guess not here. Um, Greg Kava.
Here.
Victoria Salem, Stephanie Colnick, I'm here, Angela Maciarulo, Alex McNauton.
Here.
Justin Ongley, Jen Pody, Jane Sargent.
Here.
Got it. Pete Tagley, Mary Weber. All right, we've got four of them.
Okay. We will start with the first item our agenda is the recognition of visual arts students. And for this, I will turn it over to Superintendent. Lori, Dr. Laurie Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I I have to tell you, I love coming to the meetings when we are recognizing artists. It's absolutely beautiful. And so we're pleased tonight to recognize um some of our outstanding artists in residence across the district. So here's how I'm going to do it. When I call your name, I would love you to come up. And if you can stand near your work of art, so we know which wonderful piece is yours. And then I'm going to say a few words and we're going to all recognize you. So we're going to start with W P S kindergarten Max Sorge, who created his still life inspired by Vincent Van Gogh's sunflower paintings. In this lesson, students created their own floral still life using temporary painting techniques and learn to work from the background to the foreground. Max, are you here? Isn't that here tonight? So you can see that. And again, if you haven't seen these wonderful works of art, when this is done, you can certainly view them. So I'll move on to Noor Holly from Booth Free, another one of our artists in residence. Is she here tonight? Oh, all right, I'll go back to her. We have Burnham School, third grader Lev Tuchalowski. Is Lev here? Hi, Lev, come on up. One is yours. Oh, what? Awesome. So Lev was inspired to create his own still life. He learned to observe details, explore different colored pencil techniques, and layered multiple colors to create a sense of depth. Great job, everyone. So proud of you. So Max, where are you? Oh, come on up. And if you could show us. Hi, Max. Did you prepare your speech for tonight? Are you all set?
That's quite impressive.
So Max created his still life. I think I already read this, but I wanted him to hear and his parent. Inspired by Vincent Van Gogh's sunflower paintings. In this lesson, students created their own floral still life and use temporary painting techniques and learn to work from background to foreground. You did an awesome job, Max. Good job. Hey, now we have eighth grade student Brandon Abdella. We might recognize that last name. You must have done a speech because your dad is in the audience. So Brandon created a block print titled Lighthouse in Aruba, inspired that by the artwork of Japanese printmaker Hatsukeisha Hokusai. The students explored landscapes and the techniques of relief block printing. Excellent job. I know Rachel Hoffman could not be here, but after learning about the pop art movement, senior intermediate drawing and painting student Rachel Hoffman reflected the modern pop culture of the nineteen sixties through her use of hard edge acrylic painting techniques, subject matter, colors, and fabrics. She did a great job, and I think her mom might be in the audience. Come on up, you can accept the recognition for your. And finally, we have freshman Cameron Shell. Cameron Shell's thoughtful and focused approach. Wait, is Cameron here before I start? Come on up, honey. You could stand in front of your artwork. Cameron's thoughtful and focused approach to art making is evident in the sculpture he creates. This body of work produced in introduction to sculpture class demonstrated his excellent craftsmanship, exceptional work ethic, knowledge of proportion, and mastery of sculptural skills. Outstanding work. Thank you again. We have such talented students in Region 12. Thanks to all of you and to their teachers. Thank you.
I think. Are we going to take a little break at this point or? All right, well, okay, what, what, what? Why don't we put that off until after we come back? So we're we're going to take a short adjournment here to appreciate the art that's before us. So invite the artist to come over and tell us about it. For recognizing.
So Noor, if you can come stand by your beautiful work of art. So Noor Holly is from Booth Free. The second grade students learned about facial proportions and drew their own self portraits through close observation using a mirror and using the medium of their choice. And Noor chose colored pencils and crayons for her portrait. Did a wonderful job, honey. Congratulations. So now we invite you all up to enjoy and view all the wonderful artworks.
Got it. Well, we're back in order at seven twenty seven, and um I'll ask if there's any public comment on agenda items, any public comment on this evening's agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on consent agenda. We have minutes of the Board of Ed meeting of January eighth, twenty twenty four. Does anyone wish to take these off of the consent agenda to reconsider and or make modifications? Hearing none, those minutes will be deemed adopted. Reports and recognition. I just wanted to say that we are uh we are thrilled to have Laurie Rodriguez, our superintendent. She is going to be with us, we believe, as interim for a bit of a while here, um probably through June of twenty twenty five. And um I just wanted people to know that. And unfortunately, she's going to have a lot of things to have to deal with. And so we're going to, we're going to start with some of those tonight. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay, so just have a few things to report. Um, I put in my Sunday highlights, I believe, to all of you that a plan, a recruitment plan, a diversity recruitment plan for the Connecticut State Department of Education is currently a mandate. And all districts will be required to share their efforts and planning for this as related to human resources, recruitment, and hiring practices. And this involves in ensuring all districts have goals related to the attraction and hiring of diverse candidates for employment, as well as to plan a plan on how a district would go about accomplishing this. So um, as I mentioned, this is now added to our strategic plan. So um many districts are using their strategic plan as sort of the foundation for that. So we're in good shape, I feel. We will have to, of course, create the plan. There are templates right now with CES, R R E S C, CES in advance that we can utilize and just take our strategic plan, some of the information in there and populate it in. So I think we're in really good shape with that. And it's a good thing, obviously, for for all districts to be always mindful of that. Um, we will be working with staff in the district who are piloting units uh right now for two different reading programs this year, as you know. Um, the next steps will be to gather information and data uh relevant to those two programs and then make a selection um of one of those programs to move forward. And this is, again, another requirement by the state in conjunction with the science of reading. So this is all districts. Um, some did choose waivers. We did not choose a waiver, and that meant um you'd have to show how your entire um reading program fit the criteria. But we decided um we were going with one of the programs that the state was offering. Um, we have put aside some funding for this, just so you know, in next year's budget as a placeholder for the purchase of uh the program and resources K five. Now, some of that will be taken off because we we've paid for some of the pilot materials, so that will come off the um the number. Um, again, once we know the direction in which we're moving, we will certainly bring this to all of you on the board um and share the particulars of the program that was selected. And I have full confidence in the principals, the elementary principals, and the uh elementary teachers who are piloting this both programs and really keeping copious um notes of which one is better for students. Uh, we have dates, as you know, for the hiring committee meetings related to our um Director of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment. Uh, and I will be working with uh Sofia Velez in a brief initial screening of candidates. Um, and then our qualified candidates um that we want to move on will go to the first round. And that is on Wednesday. I think I'm getting the date right, January thirty first. And this round will include, we have a core of leaders, staff, a parent in the district, a Board of Ed member. Thank you, Justin, uh for your willingness to be a part of that. And um from that point, that's the first round. And then there's a second round, and that will be the two or three finalists. And they will be asked to do a performance task, um probably around using data as if they are presenting to a board event like like all of you. And so we'll learn a lot from that performance task, and we've done it with other um positions before, and it works really, really well. And then um Wednesday is the last of the community conversations. I think they're called priorities, primary priorities. Um, and this last session is at Burnham um this Wednesday at six thirty. Um, and thus far has been clear that parents have been fully engaged and supportive of the necessary steps we may need to take in the future regarding any resources and personnel in order to ensure the safety and security of our students and staff. And that's been, I think, a very clear message thus far from our meetings. And that's all I have on my report, but I um then want to talk about the field trip. Um, our agri science students will be competing in the Connecticut State Agricultural Mechanics Competition. And this is um on April the third. And um the college campus hosts this contest to present students with real life simulations of mechanical concepts. So we will be sending two teams to compete against the other A S T E centers in Connecticut. And contest elements include welding, hydraulic or electrical systems, calibration of agricultural equipment, and small engine diagnostics. Uh, right now, we have four students and one adult attending.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to the treasurer's report.
Um, good evening. Um, we we've, I've got the numbers here in front of me, and Nicole keeps them right up to date. Um, the two big takeaways are one, uh, the propane has always been an issue for us because the cost has gone up so radically. But we've now got it locked in, so uh that's going to be over budget. Uh, the other area that we're going to be over budget is administrators. Um, that's because of the new uh the recent change here. Um, the overall numbers uh most of our budget is encumbered, meaning we know what it's going to be, and we subtract that out before we go on to how much is remaining. Um, obviously, salaries are seventy five percent, seventy percent of our budget. So uh those are not, those have already been uh accounted for. At this moment, we are thirteen point six eight percent of our budget has not been spent. Um, that compares to twenty three point eight seven percent last year. So we are in a much tighter situation. But uh as Nicole said, it's not time to panic. It's just time to start thinking about our numbers and what we need to be doing. Um, uh, there, there's always plenty of uh funds because we try to have the two percent rule at the end, and if for some reason we don't have two percent left over, we we that would be a year that we'd miss it. Um, it gives us a little bit of a cushion. And that is it on the numbers. Uh, I wouldn't entertain any questions if anybody might have. That's it.
Committee reports, curriculum and educational programming.
Uh, we have nothing new to report. Our next meeting is February twenty sixth.
Joe, at advance.
Uh, the advanced board of directors met on this past Friday, which was uh the nineteenth. And we interviewed one candidate, which was an internal candidate known as John Costa, who is our, or is the Associate Executive Director. And we unanimously unanimously voted him to be the new executive director of at advance, which he will take that seat in July when Jeff vacates it. And that's all I have.
Finance and operations.
Yes, okay. Uh, there was a handout, and you all should have gotten it. It's the timeline for the budget. It reads across the top, Region Twelve, District Number Twelve, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five budget timeline. Uh, what we are going to do, try to do is follow this timeline in such a way that it lets us get all the input we need before we make the actual proposal, before the super comes out with with her proposal. Um, uh, I just, we felt that it would be good for you all to see the timeline and understand what what we're uh how we're trying to proceed with this. We, yeah, go ahead.
Highlighted.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just going to say that the very important dates on here, you want to pay attention, starting on February twenty sixth. That's when the superintendent presents her budget. And um by March four, uh, we'll have another presentation by some of the departments. Um, and then on March eleventh, we'll have a district budget hearing. That's when the public has an opportunity to come to the public hearing and comment. Then we're going to have a budget workshop on March eighteenth, where we're going to discuss anything that came out of the district budget hearing. So we know, and and the administration has an opportunity to examine and do a deep dive on any any budget changes or any issues that have come up uh so that we are ready for a budget vote on March the twenty fifth. Um, but in the meantime, once we have that budget workshop, that's when we're going to go to the Boards of Finance of the three towns. I would really like us to make sure if you have input, questions, comments, for spending priorities that are different, anything, to make sure they get aired well before we make that first presentation to uh Washington Board of Finance. Because what I don't want to have is a situation where we we go present them what our budget's going to be, and then we change. So I I I would really like to make the March twenty fifth budget vote a fait accompli. I want that to be no surprise because we've really done our hard spade work in advance. And that's the way the schedule has been created. And I think if we do that, it'll it'll really get to give us a lot, put us in a lot better position, vis a vis the towns, and make sure that we have the kind of broad based support that we need for our budgets. And this, but this system was designed, these dates were designed to give us more time to work on the budget. So I want people to look at these dates, put them on your calendar. Don't plan on going anywhere in March. And um at least until after the twenty fifth. And I'd like to really woodshed this and make sure we get any any changes, questions, priorities, problems aired early. Um, if you have anything that comes right out of the superintendent's budget, you haven't heard from the public yet, but you know there's something in there you have an issue with, don't be shy, raise it before you get into March, if need be. But I'd really like to make sure we do a good job on this year's budget, because we know we have a lot of spending priorities this year. We have a lot of things we're going to have to do in order to make this thing go. And so we want to make sure we do it right. John.
For Alex. February uh well, Chair Capital Improvement Plan with F and O. Have uh is this for projects that are scheduled for the uh twenty four, twenty five year?
Um. We're putting, I was going to talk about that under my F and O report. Oh, we're putting together a five year plan off a facility. Uh, we we drew up a template for it today, and uh Don and Nicole are going to work on it and get the five year plan, and that will show us this year and next year.
So there'll be dollar amounts assigned for next year?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and I, Laurie and I talked about this a little bit, um, but I just want to make sure that, and I don't know if there's a way to do this, but I just don't want any surprises either, especially when it comes to public comment. So uh transparency is really important um in terms of comparing this budget from last year's budget is super important to me. So if there are teachers or anything that may be different than last year being taken away or added, I just would like to be able to know that included in the presentation so that when we are, does that make sense? Just because I, that way, um, I don't, as we talked about, like, I don't, I never like to be so much of that. So not that you would, I said it to my kids. Um, but um I just think it's really important so that we have all the information being presented that way. Does that make sense?
It makes total sense. And I, you know, I certainly couldn't um know what a someone coming from the public and making a comment about anything that wouldn't, you know, necessarily have a an impact. But I'm typically, I'm used to sharing everything upfront. If there's some picture, yes, yes.
That would be.
Just so you know what went up, what went down, what was cut, those, yeah, of course, that that should be part of the budget.
Because otherwise it gets, you know, it gets into the weeds a little bit, and it kind of gets all watered down a little bit, and we don't always necessarily know what really we're looking to. So that would be really good. Thank you.
And Laurie, I know that you'll make sure that you have it explained if you have to bring people here from the department, so understand why a change is made. Sometimes cuts are not really cuts. Sometimes they are. Sometimes increases aren't cuts. So it's hel- it's helpful to know the understanding of why. And I'm glad that Jen joined the crowd like me that wants red lines, documents that have been shown, the differences.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm going to continue. Um, the F and O committee just uh reviewed the uh transportation, the bu- the bus uh contracts. We signed five year contracts and we're due for a new one. Um, uh, Nicole negotiated it, and they said it was firm and nonnegotiable. And then she negotiated it down fifty two thousand dollars. So uh everything's negotiable. Um, so uh basically what we've done is the F and O committee approved it, the numbers. They're they're going to take them back and put them in contract form. And then the contract will be brought to the full board for approval. Um, they didn't want to start with the contract unless they knew what numbers they were going to be using. So we've agreed on the numbers uh as an F and O level, but obviously the Board of Ed has the final say on that. Um. Solar, we're still working on the solar situation. Uh, things have changed. The uh Greenleaf uh has been purchased by a company down in Florida. Um, they're still trying to put the deal together. Um, they're, the lawyers are now talking back and forth. We're trying to get a contract that we could sign. Um, I don't know where it's going to end up, but uh the good news is the licenses are for three years, and we own the licenses. Um, and so uh we've got plenty of time to get our solar in. Uh, we have approval on all the elementary schools and just recently received it for Spargo also. So uh we will, we will be going solar. How and when, I'm not sure. Um. Uh, the agri science funding, the state has decided in its wisdom to change the way things are going to work. The state is going to now pay more, and the town, sending towns are now going to pay less. Uh, the presumption is the the net amount will end up being the same. It's just who, wh- which pocket it comes out of. Um, and they're still working on this. This is relatively new. Um, and finally, uh, uh, we've been talking for 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 quite a while about an education foundation. And uh it would be something comparable to an endowment at a private school. And uh I think we're going to form one. Uh, and uh uh it it will give uh a place for people who want to make a contribution to the public school system. And at the same time, it will give us the latitude, if there's something that really wasn't on the budget before, we'd really like to do that. We can go to that fund and and get the monies for that project. And that is it for me on F and O, unless anybody has any questions.
Two quick things. So state's uh tuition grant allowance is is going to increase and the uh sending towns will decrease. Is this a bill that has to go through the state legislature? There already has gone through. Okay.
Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this.
Always been fast. I I don't know if we're going to ever head to the day of having state pick up a home on it, but this is definitely a step in the right direction.
Yeah, it's in parity with the charter and the other schools too. And secondly, regarding Booth Solar, there was, I remember there was an issue about the supply route.
Right.
Possibly coming from Route sixty seven. Is that still in the works?
Well, we, we, we have to pick the, the team that we're gonna work with first. And then I, I think that a lot of the numbers and, uh, drawings that we've seen are really out the window. They're not relevant any longer. Um, uh, you know, there was some talk about moving the, the, uh, the panels from back, the back to up the front, and, uh, but we immediately nixed that, no, no. And so, uh, it depends on who we end up choosing to be our contractor. And then they will make plans and give us drawings, and, uh, uh, we will then approve those or not approve them, depending on how we feel. But booth, booth is, i- is a difficult situation because of, uh, uh, where the transformers are, as I remember. Um,
And going solar would have certain sanitary advantages, number one, if we ever put any car charging stations. Would it actually make sense? I had someone come up to me recently and said, what sense does it make plugging that into your, your, your outlet, getting your power from, uh, you know, full-fired power plant or something? You know, say it'd be better if you owned the means, if you had access to means of production, maybe the sun. So, uh, you know, this would be very good for us. But anyway, Alex, thank you very much, and very detailed for the huge agenda. On negotiations committee, uh, I think I've said this last time, I can't remember if I did, but we do have three negotiations coming out of the board. Um, three of, three of the union, we're beginning the nurses, custodians, and the, uh, Paris and, uh, policy committee, we have not had a meeting, uh, recently, but we will be having a short. So I've got no reports, the teacher, long-range planning, yes.
So tonight on tonight's agenda, we're excited to have Lori present the strategic long-range plan that's actually in our hands, which I'm super excited about. Uh, Lori and her team has worked really hard, um, and the, uh, final product is really just incredible. And so I'm really excited for everybody to get, uh, to hear what Lori has brought to light. And, um, yeah, so that's it.
Okay. Nothing under all business. Action items, um, this is strategic plan that we discussed, so we're right into it.
That's okay.
Um, so we're gonna have it on the screen, but much easier to look right up at it. Um, and I know you've all had an opportunity, uh, to review the plan, and I know there were some last-minute tweaks. So this is the final version, couple minor things at the last minute we had to change. Um, this was a long process, um, and a collective effort. But there were a lot of transitions along the way, so that, um, certainly impacted, um, bringing this document forward. I know when I came in as interim, uh, a year ago, Rich Lemmons had just shared the basic template um, with Meg Bennett just prior to her leaving. So I met with Zoom, uh, with, uh, Rich on a Zoom call to discuss what we were being given at the time and what the next steps would be for the district. Afterward, I met with, um, members of the curriculum, I'm sorry, of the long-range planning subcommittee um, from the board to share some thoughts about the priorities on behalf of the staff, which actually ended in us adding safety into one of the priorities, and that was, um, a year ago. So at that time, I was aware that we would still have a lot of work, um, to put into the document, things like action steps, timelines, and, uh, what we're calling deliverables. Um, but something that would incorporate all of the early input from stakeholders and staff to, um, make up the four priorities that were developed and how these would serve as a guiding vision for the district. So you'll find, so just follow along, because I will mention page numbers, that's the easiest way to go. And I'm certainly not gonna read the whole document to you. I'm just gonna really talk about the organizational structure tonight, um, and bring up some highlights and key areas. So you'll find the process, other than the wonderful cover, um, that Ben Allen put together. Um, and we have a table of contents, but you'll find the process and data gathering from stakeholders outlined on pages four and five of this document. Um, this year I worked with our leadership team, starting, uh, with a review of the priorities and our efforts to break these down into the strategic, um, action steps needed to operationalize the plan. So again, I'm gonna walk you through this, um, plan tonight, uh, beginning with a brief introduction and purpose, and that is to build a learning environment um, that is collaborative, optimizes student achievement, and develops engaged citizens. Um, and this basically sets the tone for the entire document. Um, so you will see, um, in the document that we also developed a theory of action, and this is on page six of the document. So we start with the process, um, kinda laid that out for you, working with Rich Lemmons. Um, we move to a theory of action that makes specific claims. If we wanna accomplish a particular goal, um, then we need to make the requisite actions to make that happen. Um, our theory of action, um, focuses on setting a vision, high-quality teaching, partnerships, safety and well-being, of course, innovative programming, and preparing students for college and career. And so all of these you'll see, or you'll, you'll find embedded in the priorities and action steps and deliverables, um, in the, in this particular document. We're also really proud of the inclusion we made of a glossary of educational terms. Um, so many times I can tell you in just many years of, of having put together strategic plans, um, what inhibits the understanding, um, especially from parents, non-educators, is they don't really know what some of the language even means. And so how do you support a vision when you really don't understand it? So, uh, we wanted this document to be clear, um, since we, you know, really needed everyone and want everyone in the entire school community to be engaged and committed to that single vision. Um, if you go to page nine, this is really, uh, the heart of this, where the heart of this document truly begins. And that identifies, um, the four priorities. Powerful learning, ensuring that we have the highest quality of teaching and learning here. Family and community engagement, um, really enhancing and building those relationships with families and our community partnerships. And, and this, of course, expands learning opportunities for our students. Uh, diversity, belonging, and well-being, ensuring that all of the members of the school community are welcomed, valued, safe, and supported. And finally, innovation and delivering value, identifying and implementing diverse student programming in a fiscally responsible manner. And, and that is, of course, to meet student needs and interests and to attract families to our community, which we feel is extremely important. So page ten is a really nice, I think, roadmap for the core of, of our priorities and strategic action steps in the charts that follow. So it really lays it out. Each priority, I will tell you, is broken down into commitments, um, strategic actions and deliverables. And that's what we expect to have at the end of our work, something we can measure for growth and improvement based on all of our efforts. Um, we further identify the time we would need for each priority to research and plan, implement, and evaluate. And these phases are identified in what we're calling that key, and you'll see that there. And it's throughout that, the document that follows. And it would also, um, give you an indication as to potentially how, when each of those items would begin, and that would be potentially different times over a five-year span. So obviously, not everything is gonna start in year one or necessarily have to be evaluated only in year five, if that makes sense. So the priorities and the action plans for each begin on page eleven and run all the way through page nineteen. So just to give you an example, if you go to, uh, priority one, powerful learning, you'll see the very first commitment under that priority is establish a deep understanding of teaching and learning, committed to engaging students, promoting personalized learning, and supporting high academic achievement. Now look over to your right, you're gonna see an R for research in year one, research and planning. And it will have items, strategic actions in that box, right? So in that year one, the research and planning will include things like developing common terms and language within and across subject areas. Researching and developing some professional development opportunities so that we can refine best instructional practices and build our teacher's capacity. Identifying areas to improve support and deepen teacher knowledge of those practices, learning, and academic experiences. There's an example of the research stage. Now, if you move down, you're going to see, um, years one and two, implementation. Look at the items in that box, they're different from the ones prior to that. So refining new teacher orientation with a defined program, speakers and resources. This is actually the year we're going to take further steps in implementation. Implementing academic benchmarks, common assessments, something that we truly need. Um, to determine student strengths and areas in need of, for further growth, and then executing a systematic approach um, to implementing best practices. And very important, I think, uh, most important right now, developing a cycle for curriculum revision by grade level and subject area using a concept-based framework. So making sure we have a really strong cycle as to revising our curriculum and making sure it's what we want it to be. Um, and then now if you move over to the deliver, deliverables column within the same phase, go back to, uh, in, stay in the implementation phase, you will find things like new teacher orientation, including a plan for speakers and resources, collegial learning walks, when colleagues, teachers watch their colleagues and talk about best practices. Um, class, oh, um, staff-selected student-produced artifacts, pieces of work as, uh, models and exemplars of excellence, which I think is critical. If we want students to achieve excellence, we have to show them what that looks like. And then curriculum maps, I know that's been a hot topic of late. Having revised, clear curriculum maps accessible through our website so that parents have the same understanding of what we want all students to know and be able to do. You can then to, take a look at the final evaluation phase, and that's years three through five. We're staying with the same category. Um, things like use calibration exercises to evaluate how consistent we are in rigorous instruction and assessment by grade and by level. Um, monitor and evaluate curriculum units of study to determine engagement and understanding of concepts and skills. Refocusing staff development on purposeful and strategic opportunities. As you can understand, all of those I just mentioned are really essential, um, if we wanna make the kinds of instructional improvements in the classroom. And then look at the deliverables, things like, we're gonna have an analysis of those calibration exercises, revise student development plans, and yes, increase student learning. So there's your really, I mean, let's say, quantitative data, um, to show that all of our efforts are making a difference. Uh, and this is how you read the entire plan. Certainly each of the priorities follows this same pattern. Um, and that goes through, um, page nineteen. I thought it would be easier, I can tell you that all of the leaders, um, on our team have been asked already to align their own goals this year with actual priorities from this plan. And this in turn, uh, will be also shared, this entire plan, um, with staff and parents so that everyone has, um, an understanding, a depth of understanding of this vision and the commitments and the steps, the action, strategic actions. I should use my own, the own lang- our own language, um, so everyone is on the same page with that. Um, I think at this point, if there are specific questions, that's much easier. I know it takes a lot to digest this, um, and it will be the same across the entire district, but I, um, it is ambitious, I think you will feel it's ambitious, I hope you do. But what I've said to my leaders is, if we don't make people stretch, if we don't make our staff stretch, um, then why even have a strategic plan?
There's a question.
Yes.
Uh, so is year one intended to be next school year?
Yes.
Okay.
So it starts twenty twenty-four in the fall, um, and then goes all the way through twenty twenty-nine. And I do, I'm glad you asked that question. Um, I also, it made me think of something I wanted to make sure I emphasized this evening that I view strategic plans maybe differently than in the past, or maybe others have viewed it in, in districts. Um, I see this document as fluid, meaning it should never be static, where, oh, if you see year three through five said this, we may change along the way. That's how it should work. It should really be fluid, and we should have the ability to come to at any given time and say, you know what? We really think we started this earlier for a re- a good reason. So, but we wanted something definitive that we share. And so, for example, when the new director comes in, I, I, if I were the new director coming in, I will know exactly what I'm, what I need to do when it comes to curriculum and instruction, correct?
Right. And to your point, you know, I was looking at some of these deliverables. Sorry, things like the curriculum maps, we've already started, so it doesn't necessarily mean that we're waiting until the end of year one.
Exactly.
But some of these things are already being.
Yes.
So I love that there is a deliverable and kind of like a time span or a frame of reference for it. But I know that as we can check things off, we will, and new things may pop up on the list.
Because if we didn't have that, I, I, I fear what would happen is just a bunch of things that, you know, we say we're doing, we spin our wheels, but to have a timeline more specific guides us much better.
And then a- as far as the commitments, I really like that a lot of these are, um, kind of role-specific, as in.
Yes.
We know who might be accountable there.
Right.
Staff members can kind of go, oh, I really, this fits under what I need to do. I'm assuming like you said, that ultimately it'll be the new, um, uh.
Director of Teaching, Learning, and Assessment.
Learning and Assessment, who will be kind of taking charge of at least powerful one, part one. And some of the other things like community engagement might fall more under superintendent.
Right, and you know, yeah, it's another good point, um, that I wanted to bring up, and you reminded me also that there are some documents where, and I think previously, when, when you all were talking about the ear- the early stages of this, it was who's doing what. I didn't, we didn't wanna include that, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest, why? Because it's a collective effort. If we say, eh, you know, all of these things fall on the director, all, it, it doesn't make it a team at all. And a lot of these things fall on a lot of different people simultaneously, if that makes sense. Now, of course, there are gonna be things that the director in her role is gonna have a lot more um, connection to it and responsibility for it, but I don't wanna say that the principal of this school had nothing to do with that, and it really has to be a team effort, and especially in the ambitious pieces, elements of this, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, and I think it also allows for people to say, I know a lot about this, even though my name wasn't listed.
Exactly. And soon, you know, as soon as there's a name on it, you, you check it off as that's not my thing, and I, that bothers me a lot when that happens.
Well, you also make, I think you also with that, like, spreading it out over a large number of people, you make it more manageable, and therefore you'll do a better job on each individual initiative, because no one will feel like they're, I, I can't get to these five, I've still got this six over here. The, the other cool thing, looking through this, every time I look at this chart, I get new, and, and, you know, new implinations, new understanding of it. But I like the way you've broken this down into four major commitments, you've figured out how to deliver them, but what are the strategic things you have to study? How do you implement them, and then how do you evaluate them? But the cool thing is the time, a year of study followed by two years to implement. Um, and then you've got years three to five, and so years, I would think in year three, maybe even into year four, you might still be tweaking things and coming back and revisiting things, so that by year five, you're trying to figure out what worked, what didn't, and now we're ready for the next five-year plan. And we started far more educated than we, we started this one, because we've now lived. Because we've now lived through it for five years, and we've figured out where things are. I, I just love the way this flows. So thank you very much. Mary.
I, I really like the fact that you've defined terms, because there's been many times, especially the last time I was on the board, with terms and going, well, I think I know what that means. I remember going to the convention and Mike Hibbert was giving a presentation. And I said to him, okay, just tell me, what is a rubric? You know, I mean, some of the things were, you know, they explain themselves with the word, but that's good that you did that. I really like that. And I like that a lot of it is backed by the survey that was put out to the public. That, that's really, that really means a lot, I think, to the community too, that they'll look at that and go, yes, that's, that is what we, we had in mind.
Well. Well, we will, this is not the last time we will talk about this. I plan on bringing up. I mean, that's what we should get used to doing, connecting our work with the strategic plan. And that's the Board of Education as well, not just educators, parents, students, knowing what this is and actually addressing that when we're doing lots of things, making decisions, coming back to those strategic priorities.
Well, are there other questions about this? I, I think this is wonderful, the way, you know, it surely had some, some questions and difficulties when it first came. But boy, Jen, thank you for your committee greenlighting this thing and moving it ahead. And, and I really think that's important. We needed it done. This is one of the most important initiatives we had on the plate. We couldn't get to the issue of putting our curriculum online if we didn't have a strategic plan. Plus, it's paying dividends on the diversity and inclusion. And I mean, already dividends being paid by a plan that's, hasn't even been enacted. So at this point, I would be delighted to accept the motion to adopt the strategic plan as presented in, in this packet and by the superintendent.
So moved.
Is there a second discussion?
I just would like to say two, a couple of things really quick, Greg. Number one, I would like to thank Julie Stewart, who really started this a few years back. And as she's moved on, but I just feel it would be important to include her in this because I think it's really important. She really worked hard to get this off the ground, so I'd like to thank her. And I did share this earlier with Lori, but I really love the theory of action. Like when I look at the statements, it feels, it feels really community moment. Like we, we, that word, it just really makes it feel all-encompassing. And I love the statements, and I feel that they're powerful and, and strong and, and really, this. So I just wanted.
Outstanding effort. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. It's unanimous by, by these votes. And I don't know whether Jane has anything to add because she's sitting up there on the top of the screen so nicely and demurely.
I just want to thank Lori and all of you. Lori, you did such a good job explaining this strategic plan. And it is powerful and it's, it's inspiring. So thank you.
Okay, wonderful. So now we'll move on to item H, introduction to revised S V S school schedule. Dr. Shels, Mr. Croft, Ms. Douglas.
Well, good evening, and we're glad to spend a little time tonight just talking about our direction with our schedule. And you might recall in the recent past, we did as a school take a quantum leap into the schedule we now have, which is serving us very well. It's a block schedule, replacing the schedule that had become, as so, as happens in schools, a little outdated. Especially given the complex needs of our campus, having a middle school and a high school on agri-science, and wanting to take care of all of them equally well. So we had a committee that went through a very long process and developed the schedule we now have, which as I say, was a quantum leap into a block schedule. And we're ready to take the last step now forward to make the schedule work the best for all of our students and deliver and create space for the kinds of services that we want for all our students. And we just want to give you a brief overview of next steps in that schedule. And I think the first part of that is to talk about the priorities that are animating the schedule that we selected. And paramount priority right now is to protect teaching and learning and depth of instruction, especially in math. And to create room to deliver the services that we know our students need. Second priority supported by this schedule is to maximize student choice so that schedules aren't logjammed and students can take the rich selection of courses that they want to follow their pathways. Third priority is to make sure that we're delivering the seat time that agri-science students need. And the fourth priority is to be forward-thinking in the way we see the different pathways that our students can take and build strong partnerships with the community, including dual enrollment programs in colleges and work-study opportunities and internships. And those partnerships thrive best with a certain type of schedule. So I have with me tonight here our wonderful assistant principal and our wonderful director of school counseling, whose brains for scheduling puzzles far exceed my own poor brain. And I'm going to let them come up for a minute and talk a little bit about with greater specificity how this schedule meets the priorities I just outlined. We thank you for your time.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for your attention to this. We think it's really important. Mr. Allen, would you click on, please? So I'm going to talk just for a minute about the mechanics of the schedule that we think achieves the priorities that Dr. Shels laid out. And I'll move aside a little bit so that, is that okay if I move aside a little bit? So, oh, I can move this thing. Okay, great. Oh, that's cool. So the mechanics are that we intend to have four class periods a day. And they will alternate more, well, half of the days will be periods one through four, and half of the days will be periods five through eight, laid out as you see here with Monday, periods one through four, Tuesday, periods five through eight. Wednesday is the fluid piece of the machine that helps us to balance between periods, between the one through four days and the five through eight days. Thursday is periods one through four, and Friday is periods five through eight. I'll speak for a minute, a little bit more about Wednesday to say that as you can probably easily imagine, there are many days that are not simple five-day weeks, right? Memorial Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, all kinds of things. And so to make sure that period one, freshman English meets the same number of times as period five freshman English, we'll plan out Wednesdays to, to, to do that, to balance that. In addition, we will have a block of time, not dissimilar in some ways, maybe not entirely dissimilar from our current Spartan period on Wednesdays, that will be devoted alternately, we intend, to advisory and to club meetings. We want to be able to facilitate those important things for our students, and we think that that will be a good time to do that. It's worth noting that a version of this plan that was recently shared with faculty used Friday to make that adjustment. But for various reasons, including keeping consistent contact time with students as consistent as possible, we took some faculty input and ideas and have shifted that to Wednesdays, which we think will, will be an improvement. So, yeah, I think I'll move on. And Mr. Allen, maybe you could, yeah. So one of the things that Dr. Shels pointed out and that you all are well aware of is that we want to focus on and support and prioritize math instruction. That's one of the things that the schedule does for middle school and high school students by making sure that we have math instruction every day for middle school students, that we have increased math instructional time for middle school students, and that we've also will be able to increase intervention and tutoring and support time for high school students. We're excited about that.
So the other thing that we're really excited about with the eight-period schedule is the ability for students to have more choice, especially with our agri-science students that have an additional five and a half credits that they have to meet beyond the Connecticut and the Chicago graduation requirements. Having those eight periods allows for them to explore areas outside of agri-science. And in our general population, they can take more electives. So there's more student choice. Other thing that it allows for us to do is to stagger courses that maybe are only offered once a day so that students have less conflicts overall. So they'll have the ability to maybe pursue some coursework that is advanced placement course that maybe is only offered at one time and not have to choose between two courses. Other thing that we're achieving with the eight-period schedule is the ability to meet agri-science at the same time. So students will have to take a minimum of a credit in half of agri-science coursework throughout the school year so that they can meet that minimum average of three hundred and twenty minutes over the course of the school year and will be compliant with that agri-science statute. The other thing that we're, that we'll be achieving with the eight periods is students will have access to extra curricular activities during the day. They'll have personalized individualized study periods. Students who need access to things such as math support, math lab, will have extra time during the school. And one of the priorities we were trying to achieve with developing this schedule, not only with the eight periods and having more opportunities for students, but also to reduce the volatility that we have in the current schedule. So currently we have seven-period rotation that doesn't align with the typical work week. So if we were trying to develop partnerships with local businesses where students can sign up for a work-study opportunity or internship, or develop partnerships with a local college, that's more difficult to achieve if we're not following the Monday through Friday schedule. But now with this new five-day schedule, we're able to really develop those partnerships and build that up so that students, no matter what their goals are, will have a number of different opportunities. You know, with outside order.
Are all periods the same length?
So Monday to Thursday, Friday. And that Wednesday, lunch period will be a bit shorter, about seventy.
Okay. The fact that they're on your chart, that they had a bigger space for two and seven didn't mean that two and seven were longer periods. It just happened to be the way the chart laid out.
It's extended during that time because students will be taken a half hour out of that time. But the minutes in class.
Yeah. Thank you.
So would you say the additional period would be one period basically, right, the week? Is that basically for electives or just the entire curriculum?
Students can choose to take an eighth class. Students can choose to take a twelfth. So they're going to have a lot of freedom to come with that, having the credit requirements, but also exploring.
I'm just thinking as far as the number of students in each classroom, when you add an additional course offer. Does that, does that significantly impact?
So it shouldn't impact that because we're still going to have the student plan. So students will be required to carry a new course load. The only, the class with the most flexibility will be seniors. If it's one grad, if they graduate, they'll be able to use the campus for work studying. But will still hold to those minimum requirements that are competitive.
Uh, Vicki, you mentioned.
Um, you had mentioned that the students will be able to get extra help during the day. It, don't they already have that through advisory? They do, but it's going to be with the extended periods. They're going to have a longer length of time. Right now, when they do it through Spartan period, it's a thirty-minute block of time. So now they're going to have a longer block of time to be able to really get that support. Really good.
Pete.
Courses and somehow it.
Okay, so just so we're clear, we already have a block schedule that's been in place for quite a long time. Way back when, and it's been, it's been here since I was principal of the middle school. So that's never really changed.
Okay, I thought it didn't go, I thought there was.
No, that's.
Well, we, we have a period of sitting in a class for ninety minutes.
It's just that they had a seven-period block.
Schedule now, but Pete's question deserves a candid answer. There wasn't a historic block schedule here. The thing is, it was designed in a, in a way that when, when it didn't work so well, it wasn't because of the length of time of the periods. It was because the way that schedule was designed in the past, students had four of their classes in the fall semester and then four in the spring. And that created continuity of instruction problems for everybody, but especially for the folks who care about, you know, if you're a world language teacher or a music teacher or a math teacher, you don't want to think that students only going to have Spanish in the fall and then not again over the next year, or math and stuff. That kind of thing made that schedule logically bankrupt and it didn't go forward. This schedule is grounded in better research, and in fact, it represents what we're already doing. We're, we already have a block right now. We're just adding that eighth slot. And it might sound like a really small thing, you know, it's the big hullabaloo, just adding one, one period. You know, the metaphor I like is we're always looking for that small rudder that turns the big ship. And it's remarkable how adding that eighth slot gives not only more student choice, but enhances our ability when we do our build to design things in a way that clears logjams and doesn't set kids up to have to choose between two single sections that meet at the same time. It really does break a lot of ice for us. Is that, is that the schedule you're talking about?
First got initiated, there were a lot of, I think there was a certain amount of problems going back to like a few years.
Yeah. Well, and where we are now, I should say, I'm very grateful to our faculty. And this was a very, it was a, to get where we are today, to get the block we have today, was a strongly democratic grassroots process. So we had a committee that researched this for a year. It had faculty, it had parents, it had students. So nobody is, this, this is not going to be, we're not pulling a fast one. This, this is going to be similar to what we have now. We're just adding an eighth period into the mix to give us some of the flexibilities we talked about.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I know we're just kind of introducing this now, and this will eventually impact our budget depending on what kind of coursework is offered. And if there's a teacher who will be teaching that class or what that class would be, at some point, I guess we'll get an explanation of which class offerings we're hoping to provide during that period. I know right now there's some flexibility with the older kids, that they might be able to do an internship or something. But for the younger ones, is, will some of them be tasked to have to take extra help, you know, like for math or whatever? Or is there going to be a specific course then that will be offered during that block to increase the, the offerings?
So let me try to hit all your points. At the high school, at the high school right now, we think we can absorb what we're proposing without new costs or new F T E at the high school. And we do that by having students have some personalized learning periods. And then also not every student would have to take an eighth class. Now, when a student would have to take an intervention is something that we would discuss case by case, depending upon the subject and the student's needs. And when we think that it's appropriate to make that service available. But we have a lot of new electives even now that we launched. And I think that this would open more space to run those, and we'll launch some new electives too. If there is an F T E impact overall throughout the school, that's something that we'll work on in consultation with the superintendent, whose leadership is significant here and who's helping us review our proposal and refine it and get it ready so that it's an appropriate part of the budget presentation when that happens. Uh, and get it ready so that it's an appropriate part of the budget presentation when that happens. That, don't let me off the hook if I didn't hit all your, did I miss any?
No, I, I just, I know this is kind of like fluid and moving and that, you know, at some point maybe we'll, we'll get a, a better idea of what our intended. Spaces for, for whatever that block is.
Yeah, like if you're saying literally, what's going to happen with that eight, eight, that eighth spot? Um, eh, in, in the middle school, kids are going to have more math instruction. Uh, in the high school, kids are going to have more time for math intervention, more time for electives, more time of, of for. Personalized learning and study periods to get stuff done.
That's kind of what I was aiming at is that there is kind of an intent for this, that maybe it's because we need extra math instruction. I was wondering if we were going to add like an extra, it could be something different or, you know, what? What kind of the intended purpose was?
Well, and you asked, you asked the question about what's going to be in that block. It really is, it's something going in a block. It's opening up opportunities so that I could take more things that I couldn't take before restricted by seven periods versus eight. If you look at it that way. And those that don't want to fit in something and didn't want to take the band and the, all of the things, and so they have a open period. That's where study comes in, tutoring, you know, things that, where they can get support.
Already have.
Exact.
House that I wa, I always wanted to take that hard.
Exactly, but couldn't fit it in.
Got it.
Right. And for certain students, that was really pronounced. Like you could be an agri science student. Who also qualifies for supports and services and you've got all the, all your normal uh recommendations to that. Uh, all of course uh requirements that you need to take. Uh, and then you have your agri science class and then you have your supports and services. You still might want to take a music elective or sociology or French. And it was very hard for a learner with that profile to do that before. And this opens up new worlds for those kinds of kids.
John.
Yeah, so when you said budget, my ears perked up. So I'm thinking with the addition of a course. Uh, there's going to be some expense. How about as far as staff?
Well, we're, we're careful with that, John. And in fact, the reason we, the reason we didn't go. As far as this the first time is because we were on a pretty tight leash and we feel um that we're being fiscally responsible now too. At the high school. We can do this eighth period with our existing staff because. Uh, some, some kids during that eighth slot will be in personalized type learning experience or stuff. What you would think of maybe in our time, in my archaic time is what you used to call a study, but that term. No longer really does justice to what these kids would be doing. And we can do that with existing. Staff. And as far as meeting the needs of the middle school, you can't really take middle school kids and, and have that, that kind of flexibility for them. That time is going to be um dedicated to math instruction. And we will be sure we develop a responsible plan as a team. With the superintendent's guidance, again, helping us refine our vision and, and our request so that it meets with what a budget proposal should, should look like.
Other questions? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time tonight.
If no one has anything else to add to the agenda. Uh, and no one objects, I would consider this meeting adjourned at eight thirty one.